Of course, we forgot. It's our first time. Give us a break.
Sorry about that. Alright, so we're gonna do approval of the meetings of the minutes. I'm sorry for the regular meeting we had on October twenty second, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you. So approved. Alright, for communications, we have none. For old business, we have none. Um, I do wanna make a motion to amend the agenda. We have two cases on our agenda today. One just seems a little bit shorter. So I wanna make a motion to amend for case number twenty-five dash O two.
Someone's gotta make the, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Alright, so first, we're gonna call. A little closer. Alright. Alright, so first, we're gonna call case number twenty-five dash O two for Eric Green Design on behalf of Howard and Rifki Tatch? T cash, I'm sorry. Uh, for fourteen six three one Ludlow Street. Um, Article Two, Division Two, Section two one four, Schedule of Regulations requires a maximum lot coverage not to exceed thirty-five percent of the lot area in the R one, single-family residential districts. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the lot coverage of thirty-seven point six. Do we have any questions? Alright, so we can hear from, oh, gotta get our papers out. We can hear from the public if there's anyone that wants to speak regarding case number twenty-five dash O two. No one came today for that? Alright. Can I get someone to? Oh, you made the motion? And then, ooh. But we need someone to. Yeah. I'll call for, yeah, I'll call for a vote if someone wants to read the, to be decided. Would you guys want me to read that?
Sure, I'll.
Okay.
Based on the information presented in the staff report and additional findings of fact, I'm reading the right thing, right? Discussed during the review of case twenty-five dash O two, I move to approve the request of Eric Green Design on behalf of Howard Rifki Tatch, one four, six three one Ludlow Street. There are variants of two point six percent lot coverage requirement of Article Two, Division Two, Section two fourteen of the zoning ordinance to allow for lot coverage of thirty-seven point six percent. The zoning ordinance requires maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent of the lot area in R one, one-family residential districts.
Alright, can we get a vote?
Do you have a flag?
Yes.
Do you have a flag? Yes. Do you have a blanket around?
Yes.
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 Alright. Alright, so next new business is gonna be case number two five dash O one. I'm gonna mess this name up too. Torres?
Kayam.
Kayam. And that's for fourteen six three one through fourteen six five one Balfour Avenue. Article Two, Division Two, Section two one five, required conditions, requires the total area of all the previous surfaces not to exceed seventy percent of the lot area. The applicant is requesting to allow eighty-four percent of previous surfaces. Article Four, Division One, Section four oh three, parking space numerical requirements, requires places of worship or public assembly to provide one space for each three persons allowed under state, county, and local fire and health regulations. A total of fifty-three spaces are required. The applicant is requesting to reduce the total number of parking spaces to twenty-seven. Article Five, Division Three, Section five four four dot G, places of worship requires the principal building not to be located closer than fifty feet from an abutting residential district or residential use. The applicant is requesting to reduce the east side yard setback to four feet and the south yard setback to ten point seven six feet. Article Five, Division Three, Section four, five four four G, places of worship requires parking not to be provided in the front building setback area. The applicant is requesting to allow parking to be extended in the front building setback area. Alright. Do we have?
Yeah, who's gonna present the case?
I'm gonna say this.
Who do we have presenting?
Okay, so if anybody wants to present, you can come up here to the, whoever can go first.
Well, here, let's, before we hear from the public, can we get?
The person that's actually presenting. So state your naming, your address for the record, please.
Stephen Esti, good evening. Uh, I'm with Zausmer PC located in Farmington Hills. I know that we've provided a very substantial application, uh, that addresses each of the elements in writing. Um, staff has done a very thorough review, so I'm not gonna be labor, um, you know, a, a, a large presentation here tonight, but we're certainly available to answer any questions that you may have. We have representatives of the synagogue as well as the architect here with us this evening, and we'll be happy to address any concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and so we can hear from. Oh, alright, come on up.
Good evening, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to open the public hearing. I apologize.
Um, uh, I'm delighted to be here tonight. I'm Marion McClellan, fourteen one hundred Balfour, and I'm here as a resident and a neighbor, and I strongly support this project. Uh, prayers have been going on in this building for ten years now. Um, uh, my son and grandchildren go there on Saturdays to pray. Um, the Orthodox community is a minority group. It brings value to our city, economic value and stabilizing value. Uh, it's a quiet group. We're known to be a welcoming city. We're open to work with all religious groups so that everyone feels at home and wanted. The owners are very flexible and willing to meet the needs of the neighbors. Uh, there was a complaint about parking on the street, so they are, um, offering to, uh, put parking, uh, to offer off-street parking so that the parking on the street isn't, uh, a problem for the immediate neighbors. Um, fif- fifteen or twenty people come early in the morning and late in the evening. Uh, about half of them walk there. Um, there are prayers on Friday night and Saturday, but there's no cars with that, uh, because no one's allowed to drive on the Sabbath. Um, so there's no parking issue, uh, then. So, um, I strongly recommend that you support this project and reach out a helping hand to our neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Chairperson and fellow council members. My name is Stephen Selleck. I've been a member of the Oak Park community, living on Balfour Street for over fifty years. I've raised my family. I was raised there, and I've also raised my family back.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt. Can you state your address for the record?
My address is one four five nine zero Balfour Street, and I'm right in the middle of the block between Church and Briar Street. Okay? Like I've said, I've lived there. I grew up there. I remember back in the seventies when everybody moved away, and everyone went to West Bloomfield and Farmington and thought that was the place to be. Now, as times gone on, it was somewhat of a ghost town through many decades, and I see since maybe two thousand and late nineties, a lot of families have come back, which is great. It's a beautiful city. There's a lot of people walking around. It feels very family and very nice. But also, since I've been there as a young man, there was maybe five places of worship, and now there've, I've counted myself twenty. And I have no problem with religion, and I, I think it's a great thing. But on the other hand, the location is a terrible, terrible spot, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because again, I've lived there for over fifty years. A lot of you people maybe be new, don't live on the block, what have you. But let me tell you, Balfour is a through street, okay? So it doesn't matter what religion you are or what you're doing. If you wanna get from north to south, east to west, mainly north to south, through Oak Park, it's a through street. People cut through. A lot of times, they speed. They'll go down Church Street all the way to Ten Mile. You can hear them zooming down the road 'cause it's a long straightaway. That corner around Briar where the apartments are and where the house is start is a very dangerous, dangerous blind curve as it stands here today, before any of this should go further. I know I've almost gotten in trouble there a few times, walking the dogs, just driving. People can't see what's coming around that curve right away. It's very dangerous. And my belief is that if we have a parking lot there with people coming already as it stands, like our, our mayor said, that there's people there from seven thirty to eight thirty bumper to bumper on my street, and there's only one side that's parked on because it's a through street. Bumper to bumper from seven thirty to eight thirty in the morning, and then seven thirty, eight thirty at night. The whole side of the street from Briar to the apartments, all the way down past Church. So God forbid I have someone come over. I don't end up parking in my driveway. There's nowhere for them for to park. So that is one thing. Then, it's a local EMS, fire route, police route, and again, just everyday people who don't know anything about what's gonna happen possibly to try to get through there, it's gonna be very dangerous. It's already dangerous. It's already busy. It has been a busy street since I was a young man, and like I said, it was a ghost town at one point from the late seventies, eighties, and maybe into the nineties. But now, because more families have come, more traffic has come, which means my street, Balfour Street, has become a very busy, busy street. I guarantee you, it's one of the busiest streets in Oak Park bar none, bar none. This is the business street except for a mile road. And like I said, when I was younger, there was five places of worship. Now there's twenty that I know of, and that's not including Chabad houses. Again, I'm all for religion and practice, but that is the worst, worst location I could possibly pick out to do any type of business there. Then, like I said, you have bumper to bumper from that time. I, I look out my garage in my window in the morning, and also because of the schools that are over on Ten Mile, I got a convoy of minivans that are lined up trying to turn down Church Street to go to those schools. I can't even get out of my driveway. I'm late. I gotta sit there and wait because there's a line, and it's a slow process because it's stuck all the way from Church Street, and that church, yeah, Church Street, all the way through the Balfour, right halfway through the block, and moving like turtles because they're all waiting to turn, and there's a whole convoy going all the way down Church. It has become too much. If anywhere else you could pick, I would pick, just not Balfour Street. And also, if you notice, most of these religious places, they're on a mile road. I, I, like I said, they're Greenfield, Coolidge, Lincoln, Ten Mile. I mean, there's probably fifteen right there that I could just, if you want, I could go through a list, but they're on main roads that can handle that kinda congestion and traffic, that can handle that kinda parking. Because let me tell you, and we all know what is gonna be true. You may have twenty-five, twenty-seven parking lots, but that building is gonna hold more than twenty-five people. And the whole idea is when you want somebody to come to your, your, your congregation, let's call it, that you want more people to come, because at the end of the day, it's still a business. There's bills to be paid. There's electrical, there's water, there's heat, there's so on. And who does it? The members have to pay, whether it's a donation, whether they physically have to pay for their time to come there and pray. That's up to them. But as it stands, like I said, there's twenty places for people to go. We don't really need another one, but if you want to, that's great. I understand the community is growing, but that location is the worst. Because of the apartments there, the blind curve, it's already a busy street, and I'm fifty-four years old. It's already a busy street since day one. But again, because more population is coming to Oak Park, which is great, that street is even busier. Like I said, I guarantee you the busiest street in Oak Park. It beats Oak Park Boulevard. It beats any street because it is a through street for everybody, whether you're snow, police, emergency, fire, whatever. And that's why I have a problem and ask you, please, do not grant this on my block, Balfour, because it is a residential street. I wanna keep it that way, and I'm Jewish. I almost feel like I'm being pushed out because I'm not Jewish enough. Does that make sense? I hope it does because I feel terrible, and I want you guys and everyone to coexist and get along, but this location is not good. And I could go on and on, but mainly it's just repeating in different ways why it's not good. Again, it's too busy as it stands. Let's say we were all just talking over the water cooler, and this wasn't even coming up. I could tell you how busy my street was as it stands today. And if this happens, even though we have twenty-five, twenty-seven apart, it's not gonna do just. And then think about people coming around the corner on Briar Street to get through to Balfour, to get back over to Church. Why few people wanna back out, maybe get in, maybe they're talking kibbutzian a little bit, and they're taking their time pulling out. It's gonna cause chaos back up on the church, back up on my street, and it's just not a good idea, and that's why I asked the council, please, in respect to the residents on Balfour, to keep it a residential area like it's been for over sixty years. My parents bought that house in nineteen sixty-six. And I'd like it to stay that way, and I hope everyone else can come to terms and feel that this is the best choice, is to find another location and have your same idea, but somewhere else in Oak Park. We got all that field over the overpass behind there. I don't know what they did with the old J C C. There's plenty of parking at Beth Shalom. There's plenty of parking at Temple Emmanuel and the high school across the street. We have so many of these Chabad houses and religious worship places. That is just the wrong spot because of the location, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mendel Sharf. Um, I live at Mendel Sharf. I live at one four five seven one Balfour. That's on the corner of the street where the synagogue is. And, um, so we do have many synagogues and places of worship and schools in the area. That's true. But, um, there's something very special and unique for my family for having this synagogue, this shul here on our block. Um, because it's small and it's a residential, little family shul. And, um, that's the way my family feels about it. My children love going there. My children feel welcome there, feel comfortable there. Um, I'm there every morning. Um, I learn there. I pray there every Shabbos, every Yom Tiv, on the holidays. Um, my daughter comes with me often in the mornings because it's just right down the block, so she just puts on her clothing and she jumps out of the house, and she's just in the shul. Um, it's literally a minute and a, not even a minute and a half walk for her. They talk about it. It's called a down-the-block shul. My kids are always asking me, when could we go down the block? Every Shabbos, I spend many hours in the shul studying and praying, and it's because of the, um, intimate, small family atmosphere in the shul that it works so well for my family. I work in the Chabad school on Ten Mile, which is amazing, and obviously I spend a lot of time there, but it's a big school and a big shul, and for a, a family with small children, it's not always ideal. It's not always practical. So I go every Shabbos to the school. I teach there. I, I have to be there. But when I need a daven myself and I need to learn myself, I, I go down the block and my kids spend hours and hours there. So it's a, it's a very important shul, and it is a family shul, and I just wanna mention as a side that I've been davening there since it opened, and I was never solicited for money or for a donation, even when they give out the, uh, when you get called up for the teira on a Shabbos, there's no soliciting, oh, what are you gonna donate for getting this? It's just a place where they, you know, they're there to, to, to have, it's, I think it's a place, at least that's the way I look at it, for the people that are in the area, that are on the block, that want a small place, they're not looking for a big place. For a big place, there are plenty of places, but this is, eh, for my family, I can speak for my family and for the, for our, our friends around, it's a very close and, uh, eh, we're very, very happy to have it, and I thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. We have one. Okay.
My name is Erin Jacobs. I live at one four six one zero Balfour. So thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming together tonight to discuss an issue that directly impacts our community. We are here to talk about the proposed construction of a synagogue and its accompanying parking lot within our residential street, my residential street, and therefore an issue that raises serious concerns about the long-term well-being of our area. While we all deeply respect the right to worship and value the diversity that makes Oak Park such a special place to live, we must also consider the practical implications of placing another high-traffic religious institution in an area designed for families and residential living. This development has the potential to increase noise, parking overflow, and some serious safety risks while reducing our property values for a lot of homeowners. One of the most pressing concerns is traffic. Balfour is a thoroughfare street and is already a major route for daily commuters heading to work and for parents taking their children to local, private, and public schools. More vehicles on Balfour during busy times of the day means slower traffic, safety concerns for pedestrians and children, and an overall decline in the peaceful residential character of our street. Currently, congregants' cars are regularly parked up and down Balfour in the mornings due to davening and in the evening hours for afternoon and evening prayers. Sometimes they even park facing the wrong way and on both sides of the street. I did bring pictures to show you how crazy the parking can be. As of now, when my wife and I bring our kids home from extracurricular activities on weeknights, it can take my wife or I an unnecessary long amount of time to get from the corner of Briar and Balfour to our house, which is only five houses down. All of this adds to the congestion on a street that does not allow for parking on one side of it, something put into place by the city of Oak Park so that emergency vehicles would not have an issue getting through. Furthermore, Oak Park is already home to numerous synagogues. Within just a mile of Balfour, there are at least eleven synagogues. Four on Lincoln, including a home synagogue, three on Coolidge, and four on Ten Mile. Given the existing presence of religious institutions nearby, the need for another synagogue in this particular residential area must be carefully reconsidered. Most importantly, we must think about the broader impact this could have on Oak Park's public schools and community diversity. Part of what makes Oak Park a vibrant and welcoming city is its balance of cultures, faiths, and families from all walks of life. However, by approving developments that specifically cater to a demographic that does not typically attend public schools, we risk unintentionally diverting resources away from the public education system, potentially leading to lower enrollment and reduced funding. A thriving community depends on balanced growth that serves all residents rather than developments that primarily benefit a single group. While adding a parking lot seems like the answer to the parking problem, as a Balfour resident, adding a parking lot that sees peak activity during daily services as well as Shabbat and the holidays would further exacerbate congestion. Additionally, if the parking lot is insufficient in size, it could push overflow parking onto the street, which is the current problem and increasing frustration for homeowners who rely on those spaces like myself. We've had invited guests and babysitters that have been required to park all the way down the street towards, uh, Karen and, uh, and Church. So we have to walk the babysitter, you know, the sixteen-year-old babysitter from our house all the way down because all the cars are parked lined up, and there's no other place for our friends or family to park. Balfour is not a parking lot, and some of the current congregants treat it as such with no respect for the residents. Aesthetically, a large visible parking lot may also diminish curb appeal, altering the character of the street in a way that could deter future buyers and lower surrounding property values, or it could limit future buyers to a specific demographic. Furthermore, we must consider how this development aligns with local zoning laws and community planning. Residential streets are designed to provide stability, tranquility, and a sense of home. Introducing a large-scale institution changes that dynamic. While community engagement and thoughtful design could help mitigate some concerns, the fundamental issue remains. A synagogue and parking lot belong in an area zoned for mixed or institutional use, not on a street where families expect a residential environment. We urge city officials and planners to take a comprehensive look at these concerns, consult with real estate experts, and consider alternative locations that would better serve both the congregation and the surrounding community. Let's work together to ensure that development on our street is both responsible and respectful of the residents who call this place home.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is David Schwartz, two six one three zero Marlow Place. Um, I really like what everyone's been saying tonight, uh, on both sides of things. Um, I figured I'd bring up, um, an unthought of part of it so far. Um, I've been living in the community in Oak Park for thirty years. Uh, I used to be a felon and get into lots of trouble. If you know the area, there's the Loop, there's Lincoln Towers. Um, there's lots of people on the streets. Um, I was just on the streets three years ago, and I met one of the members, and he pulled me into the prayers and the learnings, and I've been going a lot. Um, I've parked on that street. I've been assaulted by neighbors and people on that street before. Um, I think a parking lot would help the issue. I don't think the synagogue is gonna get bigger from adding a parking lot. I think it might just minimize some altercations. Um, but I just think that it's a very great communal outreach place because it's pulling people off the streets and causing trouble and helping them be better. Um, and that area actually has a lot, which some gentlemen that have been there for fifty years would probably know. Um, so that's really what I wanted to say, that I really appreciate the place because it helps the community be safer, cleaner, and, you know, makes my kids feel safer on the street. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Deborah Langer. I live at one four five nine one Balfour. Um, my parents bought the house, and we've been in the house for sixty-three years, for sixty years. Um, I put in a letter to all of you. You have it in front of you. I would like to add. I would like to add that it was my daughter and I, a couple of years ago, that called the city to request that the curve, line curve, around Briar be repainted with yellow lines. We were told by the city they no longer paint. We asked people, or whoever did this, probably Public Safety, to at least look at what was going on in the blind curve because at that time, two years ago, people, I believe from the synagogue, were parking all the way around the curve onto Briar. And it was impossible to get around between seven and probably eight-thirty or nine, whenever services are over. So we have been given street signs that say, no parking behind this space. And it goes all the way around Briar. At this point, though, those signs are ignored. And there are people standing, at least two cars behind, two vans behind the sign, waiting for whoever's coming out of the religious house. I would like to ask consideration, because I do believe it's dangerous, to have the traffic that will be there, twenty-seven spots for a hundred people that fit in the religious house, will not be enough. And so the parking issues and the danger on the street will remain. Consideration I'd like to ask is that there's an in and out or an entry and an exit that's proposed on the building. I would ask that those either be switched and that the no parking be extended all the way to in front of the parking lot, if this is approved. That would at least minimize some of the danger. The other thing about Balfour is that it is a collector's street, which means that it is a street that leads to more busier streets. It is an avenue to get to Ten Mile through church. The other thing is it's second in consideration for snow plowing. And so again, it's a very important street. The other thing is the street is not a true three-lane street, one for parking, one for going east, and one for going west. It's about a two-and-a-half-lane street so that people have to judge whether they can fit next to each other when they're going each way. The other problem is, is that my daughter's car, her side-view mirror, was knocked off by some of that traffic going down by whoever it was. But that also says that, again, the street is not wide enough for the traffic that comes down it. I also think, again, that there are alternatives to building out this building as a large because we are residential and we are home-oriented, that they could negotiate parking even now with Beth Shalom, with Temple Emanuel, or use the parking lots in front of the park that is there. Or at least consider to park on Ludlow to leave room on Balfour so that it's safer. Again, I would like to see my street stay with homes and residential rather than a building and a parking lot. I believe that would change the whole look of the street, and I would be very uncomfortable. But again, most of us can't afford to move because of all that's going on in the world. I would ask that this motion, or whatever it is, be tabled so that there be a traffic study of the street so that we can make everyone aware of the congestion. So we can make everyone aware of that blind curve. And it is a blind curve. You don't know what you're running into when you come going east. And going west, it becomes very narrow because people are trying to fit around the east side of the curve. So I would at least ask that this motion be tabled, that there be a traffic study, and that there be consideration to the existing neighbors in addition to what I entered.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lev Kozlov, and I reside at two four six four zero Sussex Street. Like I said, my name is Lev Kozlov, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed synagogue expansion on Balfour Street. As a child of immigrants from the Soviet Union, I've been raised with a deep sense of faith, community, and tradition. My parents came to this country seeking the freedom to practice their religion openly, something that they were denied in their homeland. From them, I learned that faith isn't just about belief. It's about creating a place where people come together, find support, and strengthen their ties to one another. This synagogue represents exactly that, a place where individuals and families can connect, share in our traditions, and find community. It will be a vital space for people like my family who have found not only spiritual fulfillment, but also a sense of belonging and resilience through our faith. I understand that there have been concerns regarding traffic in the area, and I want to acknowledge those. The addition of an adjacent parking lot will help alleviate some of those issues by providing more parking for our congregation, thereby reducing on-street parking and overall traffic in the area, especially on days when we gather for services. Furthermore, most of our religious observances take place over the Sabbath and Jewish holidays, during which time we do not drive or use our cars. This means that much of the traffic typically associated with our services is significantly reduced on those days. The proposed synagogue will enhance our community, not only by offering a space for worship, but also by serving as a hub for social support, education, and cultural connection. It will be a place where people like myself and my children can continue to thrive in a supportive, close-knit community. I respectfully urge you to approve this proposal so that our congregation can continue to grow and contribute to the greater good of this Oak Park community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you can come straight to the phone. Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Anna Elkina. I live on one four six two zero Balfour Street. Well, this is like a crosswalk street of the synagogue. That's why I knew this problem very well because every time when I have to go, like, you know, backwards, like, from my garage, I'm afraid to hit car because it's always car parking, like, you know, this is. And when you turn, it's very dangerous, you know. I did this, you know, a couple times, you know, and it's bad spot. Okay, I'm a mechanical engineer. I'm working in an architectural engineering company, you know. And that's why from my engineering point of view, I think it just like, you know, it's not because you have to, like, you know, this, all this conversation about parking, traffic. But in Oak Park, it's on the Balfour where we have this, it's like, I forget this name of the street. But Balfour is going this and then it's way. And if you're going straight, it's like, it's a big parking lot. It's empty. It's a big, empty space, you know, it's close to freeway. Why you can build new synagogue, it's beautiful. It's going to be beautiful synagogue, like, you know, in this part, it's parking. It is no problem. You know, that's why you just do it, but do in the correct spot, you know, because I don't know what kind of engineering company you, or like, you know, this is project that was done. But it was bad because they choose bad, like, parking, I mean, place. You know, that's why, yes, in the beginning for this synagogue, yes, they built it. They used this as an existing house, and they rebuilt this. Okay, right now, they want to get bigger spa, place. Okay, just build new synagogue, two blocks further. It's just two blocks further. Everybody can walk. And that's why everybody going to be happy. That's why think about this, you know, just do new project. It's in Oak Park, it's in walkable distance from, for everybody, and it's good for us. I'm sorry, like, I didn't prepare, like, this is, this is, but this is lucky game. I have a lot of experience, you know, I'm working on a lot of project. That's why think about this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Eitan Cohen, two five three one zero Ronald Court, which is the first cul-de-sac right off Balfour. Two five three one zero, Eitan Cohen, two five three one zero Ronald Court. And Ronald Court is the first cul-de-sac right off Balfour. So thank you for the opportunity. My family, obviously a young family with young children, relocated to Oak Park about a year and a half ago. And the reason we relocated specifically to this neighborhood was because we were looking to give our children opportunity. We were looking to give our children opportunity to grow up in a safe environment, to give our children the opportunity to grow up in an environment where they're surrounded by the people we want them to emulate. There is no better place. We wanted to give our children an environment where they will find their place. And here we found it. I'm a proud pedestrian, and I'm not talking about traffic. That's architectural engineering, city planning, that's beyond me. But what I can say is that this community has given my children a place where they feel they belong. I'm renting right now. My six-year-old daughter turned to me the other day and said, could we buy our house? Intuitively, these children know this is a place where we belong. This is a community where every one of us is respected. Every one of us is cherished. My son came to the synagogue the other day, and he's, he came and his feet were all wet. And he came and he took off his shoes, and he sat down right in the middle of the sanctuary. You know, little guy. And he got up and he said whatever he could of the services, and he felt like a million bucks. Do you know why? Because after the services, several people came over to him and said, wow, that was beautiful. This is a kid who has a hard time in school. This is a kid who has diagnosis for things that make it difficult for him. This is a kid who found his place. So I'm not going to belabor you with a long speech. I don't have a long speech. But I can say one thing, and I can say that from the heart, is that this synagogue and this community has given me and my family a place where we belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Don Berlin. I live at one four five nine one Balfour. My wife just spoke a couple of turns ago. And so some of her ideas are mine, and some of my ideas are hers. So you might hear some things from them before. As my dad, of blessed memory, would have said, this could work if we use a little bit of common sense. What I see as the major issue here is what my family calls a blind curve on a fire route. Because this is a fire route, and there is only parking on one side. Many drivers go beyond the twenty-five miles an hour speed limit. And because of, what's that?
It's ten miles an hour.
No, no, on the street, Balfour. Yeah, so on the street, they go twenty-five miles an hour. And when they get to that curve, sometimes they don't slow down to the ten miles an hour. But other than that, though, still, they're going twenty-five miles an hour on the street where cars are passing each other. There's no reason to slow down because there's room enough to get by. And as my wife has said, my daughter's car, you know, they swipe, you know, the mirror right off the side of the car. I had another neighbor, someone backed into their car as it's sitting there on the street. It's a very busy street, as you, as everybody's been mentioning. And everybody's, you know, they're just in a hurry that they don't even stop to tell us. Well, that's something else. But back to the blind curve. I've experienced several times a year a close call when I am entering that curve headed east and cars slamming on their brakes, ordinarily missing, side-swiping each other. And it is worse on days when drivers are sitting in their car, standing in the no-parking zone. It has also happened when cars are exiting the driveways of the house of worship, you know, the synagogue. And there are cars that are parked on the street or straddling the sidewalk. It's not always easy for them to see me or me to see them as they're coming out. Back to what my dad said about using a little bit of common sense. If we could change that no parking to no parking or standing and extend the no parking or standing around the curve going east to after the proposed structure, or at least through the entrance driveway, so that there would be no parking in front of the parking lot, and those who are exiting the parking lot, as well as those going around the curve, they can all see each other without an obstructive view. This could work and make this a safe street to drive. Now, if we could find a way to slow down traffic on the street, that'd be even better. There, there might be a need to compromise here for those who want the synagogue and for those who want a safe thoroughfare in their neighborhood. This is something that I'm hoping that you take in consideration, you know, so that this could work for everybody. I mean, I happen to like the synagogue there. I hope to visit it soon. But I think, I think it's good for the community. But at the same time, it only will work if we make it a safe place to be.
Thank you. Sure.
Hi, I'm Sarah Berlin. I live at one five seven seven East Pearl Avenue, Hazel Park. I used to live at one four five nine one Balfour with my parents. I've been to the synagogue because friends have gone there for some backyard celebrations. I understand the need for the expansion and everything. I kind of wish the case numbers, twenty-five oh two and twenty-five oh one were put together. I see that twenty-five oh two for the synagogue or the place of worship is on the farthest locked away from the blind curve. So I wonder if there's any room for proposals of changing it so that the parking lot has room to be further away from the blind curve in order for less of that danger of coming out. As well as my mom said, changing the exit area, making a right-turn-only out so that they're not going to turn into the blind-only curve. As my dad said, there could be room for compromise here, things that can actually help with it. I think a traffic study could be, help with that. Also, as, there has been a lot of other issues on the street in general. I think some proposal of, not from the synagogue part, but from, in general, just Oak Park street, being lined, parking spaces on the street in general through Briar and throughout to provide more parking spaces for everyone, not just, just people who are here, could be helpful as well as that we're not just stuck, people taking up one spot on the curve. We can have double spaces on the curve, things like that, that could also help with everything.
Thank you. All right, looks like we have, oh, nope, all right. I thought we were gonna, no, I saw him and one more. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chaim Kleinberg. I grew up at two six.
I also need you to, could you say your name a little bit louder for them? And I need you to state your address.
My mom gave me the name. She can't even pronounce it. It's C-H-A-I-M. It means life in Hebrew.
And your address.
I grew up at two six zero zero one Harding Square.
Thank you.
Thirty years in Oak Park. Made the jump over to Southfield. It's my son, Donnie, over here. Donnie's eleven years old. Every Saturday, Donnie and I walk from our home on Sherfield Place. That's just about half a minute from Southfield Road. Every Saturday morning, we walk back and forth from our home to the synagogue over on Balfour. Every night, I wouldn't want to say we're part of the problem that's being addressed here. Donnie goes and has a mentor for twenty-five minutes and does his homework every evening. And I actually go there and park in the driveway and wait for him to come out. And I see the congestion and I see the issues and, you know, what's being presented here this evening. But this is a place that we've been studying, living. Our family's been there. We're looking forward to having his bar mitzvah there. There are many places in the city to pray and to be part of the community. But this is like the people were mentioning before, this is what we call home. We feel loved, we feel respected, we feel warm. And we wouldn't make the thirty-minute trek in the heat and in the cold every Saturday back and forth if we didn't feel that way. I don't, I'm not a mechanical engineer. I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer. But I do know that the proposed parking lot, in my miniscule knowledge of what goes on, would probably alleviate a lot of the issues. And I think, you know, there's definitely plans in place that can be fixed and looked at to alleviate. I think the parking lot will be an amazing, you know, place I want to park in the morning when I come to park on Balfour. I mean, I park on Briar, past the no-parking signs. And I walk to the synagogue, you know, because there's no parking. We've seen the residents have been alternated and harassed by some of the residents on the block at times, you know, for just parking in the right, right. for just parking in, in the right, right spots and it's not fun for anyone. It's not fair for the residents who live there and clearly not fair for the participants and the, and the, uh, and the worshippers. So I thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So do we have any, I don't see anyone else.
My name is Dr. Larry Kurz. My address is two five five zero one Colleen Street in Oak Park. I was not planning on speaking, but I figured I'll give it a shot. So I appreciate, uh, both sides. I think everybody has some very good points. I'd like to point out just a few. First of all, I've been living in Oak Park, like I said, for about twenty-six years. I think it's well established that there's a very strong need for the synagogue in Oak Park because it's consistent with the family values of Oak Park that caused us to move here and to build a house. But I would like to address the considerations of those that came here to point out that there are some dangerous situations if this is passed. So I thought of every one of those myself. However, I think the board has to consider that those are all theoretical considerations. The fact that it's dangerous, the fact that the property values are gonna go up, gonna go down, there's gonna be a lot of congestion. So those are theoretical considerations. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. I also want to address the idea, it was suggested that there's gonna be a hundred cars there. Well, first of all, I'm there every single morning. I've never seen more than about fifteen cars. During the week, maybe you could go up to twenty. But on the Sabbath, where's, which is really the only time that we have maybe fifty, sixty, or seventy people, there's almost no cars because we're not allowed to drive on the Sabbath. So I think you should nullify the idea that there's gonna be a hundred cars. As far as people parking in the area that says no parking, I'm there every single morning. On one occasion in the last five, six, maybe seven years, I've seen one person park where it says no parking and that person was from another state and didn't know that. In regards to the blind curve, that blind curve is a major problem. I've been here twenty-six years. I don't know anything about traffic control. If it were me, I'd just put a stop sign there, or maybe a policeman. And then, um, one other thing. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
All right. I think I'm gonna close it. This is gonna be our last speaker.
Hi, thank you. My name is Michael Plittman. I live in Garner Street, two five five three zero Garner Street. About a five-minute walk from this synagogue. I'm a taxpayer of Oak Park. I'm a happy resident in Oak Park. The synagogue is a small, close group who all pray together. And all my, I have five boys. Thank God, we all come together. It's really cute, all my kids. And it's, uh, so nice to sit with me and get to pray to God together. And it means a lot to me and the community that we have this place of prayer. The, as we said before, the busiest day of prayer is on Saturday. Nobody drives on Saturday. That's, we don't, in our community, we don't drive. So you can't be worried about parking. And I pray there during the week also. I usually see around between five and ten cars. He said fifteen. I disagree. I think ten cars is the most I've ever seen. And, um, twenty-seven spots is a lot, right? We're, we're more than double. If we see at most ten cars coming during the week, twenty-seven is, it sounds like sufficient to me. So I'm pleased, I'm asking all of you to approve this project. It means so much to me and my family. It's a nice, fun place for my family and my kids. And, uh, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Goldstein. I live on one four one three one Winchester Street. My grandparents moved to Oak Park in the nineteen seventies. As a physician, public safety is of utmost concern to me. Our community is one of the most safe communities to live within, in the local area. Although I do understand that there are concerns regarding the parking, I do believe fully that the parking lot will address those concerns completely. While I understand there are multiple houses of worship, I unfortunately do not have multiple houses of worship. I only have one. Um, regarding the, um, sale pricing of housing, historically, if you look at maps, houses near synagogues go up in value. They do not go down. This is my synagogue. This is my community and proudly I consider Oak Park my home. I therefore fully support this initiative to build a new synagogue.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jody Steinberg. I live at one four six three zero Ludlow Street. I used to live on Balfour, right next to the synagogue, so I know the parking problem. I just wanna say one thing. Because Jews, Orthodox Jews who go to the synagogue are people that don't drive on their holidays, a large percentage of members of the synagogue, I mean, people who go to the synagogue, live within walking distance and often walk. My husband goes to the minyan every morning and he walks. We almost never bring our car to the synagogue. And there are just a few people that, that would probably drive in on Friday evening and leave their car there till Saturday evening. And that, and that's it. And I think the twenty-seven parking spaces will be really helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Menachem Ostraf. I live at two five five zero zero Karen Street. And I've been involved in the synagogue for a number of years. I wish, would wish to point out that indeed the synagogue, as has been mentioned by various people, is a diverse group serving many different people. And we would warmly welcome anyone to come visit and with open arms of any level of affiliation. That is the sense of unity and camaraderie, which the mayor mentioned is what the city represents. That is something and a, a value which the shul indeed shares, and we would welcome anyone to come visit and join us. I would like to point out one aspect with regards to the traffic consideration, which is something which has been brought up a number of times and indeed is a very legitimate consideration. And, uh, I recognize the, the issue involved. Um, firstly, it is definitely the case that it is a blind corner. That is something unique to the area. I think the impetus for this parking lot, as has been mentioned, was very much to alleviate this problem. A problem which has not been directly caused by the shul. The parking on the street is something which, yes, has perhaps increased to do with the shul. But I wish to point out something which I'm not sure has been mentioned. It is only during very specific times during the day. Yes, there are times in which there is greater frequency of traffic. There are perhaps more cars on the side of the road. It is at a limited time. We're talking perhaps maximum two to three hours during the day. The rest of the day, the road remains clear of traffic related to the synagogue and remains free for the EMS services and the other important thur- the, the important thoroughfare which the street correctly pointed out is. As regards to the high sp- house prices, indeed, as was just mentioned, I think that the synagogue will actually allow people to see that there will be a rise in their house prices and may add value to their properties. I think also the fact that there was, uh, unanimous agreement from the planning commission, that definitely attested to the recognition that the synagogue is serv- is serving a purpose to the community. Many have mentioned the value it has given them and their families. And indeed, I think there was much support shown in the letters to the planning commission about the warm feelings which many of the young families on the street, who may not be represented here this evening, have shown. And that they find that the synagogue has served them well and they very much appreciate that the closeness of the synagogue to their homes. Particularly, and as has been mentioned, there are a number of synagogues in the area. As we do walk on the Sabbath and the festivals, having a community close to us, within the walking distance, is very important to us and which is why we feel that the unique feeling which the synagogue has. And I think the fact that we're facing this problem has shown the organic growth and the eclectic nature of the synagogue to en- to encourage many people to have joined us, I think has shown the, the, um, the warm and welcoming nature. And that has been the reason why many people have therefore been supportive and wish to have a place they can walk to, close to their home. And therefore, as I said, very much in the, the, um, the spirit of the, the city of Oak Park, we very much welcome the, a wide variety of people to come and visit. We want to continue to be able to serve the community well and to offer value to those people around us. And, uh, therefore, it's our hope that the, uh, to, you will consider and support the initiative. So, um, as far as I understand it, there is on one lot is where the actual construction will take place. But that is not the lot in which the synagogue currently stands, which means that nothing will change. The synagogue will be a, be able to continue to function where it stands right now while construction takes place next door. So there should be no, um, immediate concerns as far as anything that will change during the construction. And I think, um, perhaps I can point out, if I understand correctly, the, if indeed there were to be this proposed construction, this may well take place during the time when Church Street will be closed owing to the repairs to the bridge. I think the possible, um, annoyances of the construction and the effects that might have on the street will be greatly mitigated by the fact that I imagine the dynamics of that street will be very different when it is no longer a thoroughfare to Church Street. And I think that will be something which will stand in the favor of the local residents and will affect them far less than it would otherwise have had during a possible construction stage. That is, that is correct.
I hope you can hear me. My name is Shirley Cotton, C-O-T-T-O-N. I live at one four six one one Balfour. All of the people sitting there, I recognize one as a neighbor. He also lives on Balfour. And he's seen Balfour residential part of Balfour change, much as I have. The houses that you're, well, the spaces that you're using now for your, uh, synagogue proposal, there were once people living there that I knew. They had kids. My kids grew up, their kids grew up there too. My house and the house next to me is the only thing that's stopping you from expanding down toward church. There is already a rental house next door to me. And I see the future going all the way down to church if I move and my neighbor moves. Because I think you already own the other one. I don't know where it ends. I have no problems at all with anybody's religion. I said nothing when the tent went out in the back, but if I brought my Baptist congregation here and put a tent in my backyard, there would be a problem. That's my only concern. I love you guys. I bet none of you live on Balfour in that block. So you don't understand what we're going through. Certainly, there are only times of the day when every, every spot in front of the house is filled. As my neighbor said, "You can't even have company at your house." My, my friends gotta go down to church over by the park and parks sometimes just to visit me. And they're as old as I am. I, I didn't say it, but I've, I've been at Balfour and on Balfour since nineteen seventy-six. My daughters are sixty years old and fifty-four years old. They know nothing but Balfour growing up. That's all they knew. And I want all of your children to grow up and have the same memories of Balfour that my kids do. As I said, I don't think, you may live in the neighboring streets, but I doubt if you have that problem that we have. In the morning, we have the traffic from the schools. In the afternoon, when the school's out, we got the traffic from, from there. I can't even get into, out of, in and out of my own driveway half the time. I gotta wait for six cars to pass before I can just back out. I don't like it. I love the fact that you wanna enlarge your business, your building, but that is not the area to do it. You have kids. And the kids play in the front yard. They don't play in the backyard. What does it take? A kid to get hurt out there before you, really, somebody can see the light? And that's all I have to say.
Okay, from what I understand, based on the proposal, that the synagogue is supposed to hold, um, a hundred people. Um, for that particular number of people, there's supposed to be, I think it's like fifty-three parking spots. And there's supposed to be, there's twenty-seven that are being built. Um, the other twenty-six parking spots, well, they're gonna be used. I mean, hopefully the synagogue is successful. I hope it is. Um, but that means that on the street, there will still continue to be thirteen cars parked up there during those two times a day. Um, you know, and the other people, you know, they'll have to walk a little bit further. They'll, they'll park on Ludlow or whatever. But the fact that just the twenty-seven spaces won't necessarily hold all the cars. If there's gonna be a hundred people there, which we hope, uh, you know, especially during simchutz and stuff. I understand the Shabbat, you know, there won't be any. Um, but the other six days a week, you know, the two days, times a day, there still will, um, it still will be a factor. And again, the only part I'm asking for is just make the streets safe. And, um, you know, no parking like in front of the synagogue or something like that around the curve.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else. All right, so now I'm going to call, oh.
Hello, everyone. My name is Natim Medwed. I live on one four six one zero Ludlow. Don Berlin, your dad is a genius. He said we can compromise and work together. It'll be amazing. That's the best. Sorry? Speak to the- I, I came to America twelve years ago and I left. I came back. Sorry, a bit excited. Seven years ago, just for this synagogue. I love this place. It's my home. No one ever charged me a penny. I myself visually appeared in this many shows, there are many, uh, synagogues around. I could not walk all over. My kids walk safely to the synagogue. Every day we have it. You can come tonight, visit, like the rabbi said, you can come visit. Seven, four, we have kids. They study together with other adults. He walks safely there, walks safely back. We are good to go. It's, um, it's amazing. It's, I feel safe to walk without my eyes. They don't work like yours. Close distance, not anywhere far away, which would be complicated for me otherwise. And, um, the cars, there's two issues. One is the school and one is the synagogue. The school, we're not building a school over there. We're just building a syn- a synagogue, a nicer place, which is amazing right now. So the cars were driving around and they, hopefully, I don't know, zoom, don't zoom, do whatever. It's not about the synagogue. It's about the school and any other people who live in Oak Park. The fact that Oak Park has so many people coming around through is because there's a lot of Jewish people around. Which, if you know, we're real estate, Jewish, Jewish real estate, they live to, they like to live next to the synagogue, which always raises a price too high for us. That's well known all over, right? So this is the best place to be. Like the rabbi said, please come visit us. We'll be happy to have anyone over there. And I need that place. I just need it 'cause I cannot- And I need that place. I just need it, cause I cannot walk anywhere else. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I don't see anyone else. Alright. So I'm gonna go ahead and close this to the public. And I wanted to recognize that we have many letters that we did receive that were for and against. We're not gonna read them all because there were plenty, uh, but we do wanna acknowledge that we received them. Alright, do we have any questions, uh, the board wanted to poll?
Yeah, I, counsel, maybe you could earn your billable hours and go back up there? Do we have the builder also here? Okay, perfect, perfect. Um, first question is, what happens if we deny this tonight? What's the congregation's plan if that occurs?
So, let me start with, this was approved unanimously by the planning commission. Um, two things were approved, the conditional use at this location and the site plan. The site plan is contingent on these variances. Most, and I respect a lot of the comments that were here tonight, I mean, the reason that this was done to begin with was because of concerns over parking. Right, which this will alleviate significantly and frankly, improve the existing facility and building for this street, uh, which I do believe will improve property values. But, um, the important component of this is that, um, this, this use, if you will, is um, now established at this location. And most of the comments tonight were about the use, having the use at this location. The use should be at a different location. None of that addresses the substantive issues that are before the ZBA that relate to the variance itself and the criteria that go to evaluate the variance. The, the one thing that, that I put in my papers that I, I just wanna reiterate for the ZBA is that, um, and we cited to the case, that was a nineteen seventy-two case ironically involving Oak Park. But it was a synagogue, um, and it happened to be an Orthodox synagogue. And this is what the case said. The applicant is an Orthodox Jewish congregation. The members of the congregation are forbidden to drive to synagogue on high holidays and Sabbaths. Thus, to enable attendance at worship services on those days, it is essential that a synagogue be located in relative close proximity to the members' residences. Certain uses of land have come to be recognized as bearing a real, substantial and beneficial relationship to the public health, safety and welfare of the community so as to be afforded a preferred status. That preferred status was codified in the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which is a federal act. And it's important only because it frames this ZBA. It gives this applicant a heightened status in its application. It gives the board a much broader discretion in terms of making the decisions under the ordinance. You heard that a lot of the people here tonight, this is their congregation. This is where they go. They live here, they walk to it. They've been doing that for over a decade. The only thing that's here before you tonight is an opportunity to improve that. And in order to improve it, without reducing or eliminating services or turning away congregation members, is to design it in the way that it's been designed, uh, which will allow the relief off of the street from parking, as well as the existing congregants to have a facility where they can worship. Uh, that doesn't exist frankly, in this community. I think that, in looking at the parking in particular, the standard method of calculation used to determine the required number of spaces, it doesn't take into account Orthodox Jewish practices. Uh, as you heard many people talk, uh, they do not drive on the Sabbath or high holy days. They walk. And most, the, the highest use that we've talked about tonight is ten to fifteen cars, which is much less than the twenty-seven. The way that the calculation is done under the ordinance, it calculates the fifty-three spaces based on every table and chair and area being filled at the same time within this synagogue. That is never gonna happen with vehicles, uh, present. I mean, you've heard testimony tonight from many of the congregants, as well as, uh, the information that we've put in our papers. Um, and that's very similar to the nineteen seventy-two case frankly. In nineteen seventy-two, the, the request was denied from the ZBA based on issues like parking too close to residential, parking adjacent to residential, very much the same types of comments you heard here tonight. But the fact of the matter is, this is an existing practicing synagogue that's been approved by the planning commission for the use at this location. And all they're doing to this site is improving it. And they can't do it on this site with the, with the size that's there, without getting these types of variances to allow them to build an adequate facility, get relief off of the street from the traffic and the parking, and to put the facility on a, on a lot and location that will continue to work for this, uh, for this particular congregation. So, um, I mean, I think that both, uh, both the planners in their report noted, and I, I suppose this is the last thing I'll say, uh, if there's not further questions, but, um, there were, the planners at page nine in their report noted that there's a history of approval by the ZBA for approving variances for setback reductions, when the reduction will not negatively impact the adjacent uses or essential, essentially alter the character of the neighborhood. I think that criteria is met here. I mean, we have neighbors on both sides that have, we've consulted with, we've collaborated with, we've worked with planning. They've agreed that the way it's designed is appropriate. If anything, it's gonna enhance the residential area. Um, as you see with any, I mean, look all over Michigan, Catholic churches, Baptist churches, uh, mosques, synagogues, they're all located in neighborhoods, because people wanna be able to have their worship space in their neighborhood. Likewise, the planning department noted that there's a history of approval for variances for requirements in off-street parking spaces for places of worship, whose religious practices require congregants to walk rather than drive. That's the same thing we have here. So, the planning department has acknowledged these exceptions under these circumstances. Uh, we've set forth in our papers that have been submitted to the city, uh, the rationale and how we've met all of those criteria. And then the framework of the federal act gives you added discretion to make a decision in favor of the applicant. So for all those reasons, uh, we were requested approval here tonight.
Well, we're, we're gonna. Yeah, yeah, we're, wait.
Public is closed.
Counsel, yeah, yeah, clear it up.
So this is close to the public. The only time that we'll be, uh, speaking is just going to be questions so that we can understand before we make a decision unfortunately. So, we giving everyone a time to talk? At this point, it's just us asking questions so that we have a better understanding, okay?
No, 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 that's, unfortunately, that's not the way it works.
Us trying to come to a decision. So unfortunately, we're just gonna ask the questions. You're free to stay and listen. But there's no questions anymore from the public, cause it's closed, okay?
Sorry about that. I jumped in front of you there. I appreciate the comments, counsel. I didn't get any answer to my question. The question, the question was, hold on. The question was, if it, if we deny, what's the congregation's plan?
Well, they, they wouldn't be able to design the site without the variances. They would be stuck with the existing facility that they have, which is frankly, in need of improvements and repair.
And that would also include the parking situation status?
It would keep the parking situation where it is on the, on the street and, uh, and not alleviate the concerns that some of the residents have raised here tonight, that we believe this design will alleviate.
Okay, I have a question for you. That hasn't been addressed, and maybe, I'm not a builder.
Okay.
I'm a lawyer, uh, in case you couldn't tell. In looking at the request for the setbacks, so I'm wondering, the southeast corner looks like it's gonna have virtually no space there, correct? It's gonna have ten point seven six feet on the south side and four feet on the east side, correct?
Correct.
So, what's the plan for if, God forbid, there's some sort of emergency in the southeast corner of that property? If there's a fire back there, just, that's it? Too bad, so sad?
No, no, the, the, it's gonna be required to be fire suppression in the building. So it will have sprinkler system. But it meets every other, or, I mean, it, I know it's hard to admit, this is essentially just a, another house construction. So, there is a fire hydrant to the east, which is under a hundred and fifty feet. I think it's a hundred and twenty-five feet. There's a fire hydrant to the west, that's under two hundred feet. That gives you access from both directions. If there's a fire truck, they can hook up to it and they can get to the back of the property, just like they would any other house. Um, also, if they want, if they needed to come on to, pull on to the property, the truck on to the property, they could do that with the parking lot. But that, that should not be an issue. First and foremost, it's fire suppression within the building, so that'll be number, and we, we go through fire, right? So our next step, if we are able to be approved tonight, our next step is go through engineering approvals. In that engineering approval, we go to the fire, we submit to fire. If they have any concerns or any issues, we address it and we work with them to make sure that nothing like that would happen.
And, and just to reiterate, even though the building will be designed as a residential, uh, looking building, it, it will be fully fire suppressed as a commercial building would be, so.
Okay. Uh, and then, counsel, my last question for you is, um, I mean, this is, this is really a situation of the synagogue coming to us for forgiveness, not for permission, right? In other words, they were in that building without the knowledge of the city.
Yeah, so, they've been operating there for, for twenty, since twenty sixteen. And certainly, the city's been aware of the fact that they have been a synagogue. The complaints that the city has received have only been related to parking. Is, it's my understanding. And so I, I do believe that, that the city was aware and allowed the synagogue to operate for over a decade at this location. However, in working to remedy this and bring it all together, as part of this entire plan, we went to planning commission and now received a conditional use. So that, the planning commission has already, if you will, forgiven us. And given us the conditional use that's required, subject to this site plan, which they've also approved unanimously.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I'll, I'll just say, I, very quickly, I, I am very torn on this. I really am. I'm not a congregant there, but I've been in there. I, I think that everyone there is wonderful. And Rabbi Ostrom is one of the hidden gems of this community, maybe not so hidden. But I, I'm very sympathetic to the individuals who, who have, uh, who live on Balfour. I don't live on Balfour, but I have been stuck on Balfour many a time, um, cursing under my breath. You know, a lot of people who just stopped in the middle of the road while people were illegally parked. I know that the twenty-seven spots will help, but it'll only help if the congregants actually utilize them. As opposed to saying, well, if I park on the street, I could still get out of here quicker than, you know, parking in the back of the lot. I just, I, I'm just gonna say, I'm, I've been very torn on this both ways.
Yeah, and I, and look, I, I think that these are real concerns that are being raised about the blind spot and, and parking on the street. I mean, there, there are other things the city can do to address those issues. But I think this particular proposal is gonna be a huge improvement. I drove by there today. I, I mean, I, it's gonna be a huge improvement, not just for the building, but it's gonna be a huge improvement for traffic and parking as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just gonna add a little bit to that. So there, going through this process and the design process and where we started and where we finished, that, working with our client on this, that, that, obviously, that was the big concern. That's where we started. It was, hey, can you guys do something and help us alleviate parking because we're, we're getting complaints and we want, we don't wanna be a bad neighbor? It started there and it finished with, well, we need to be able to provide circulation around our, on-site. So that's why it's designed the way it is. There's, there's thought behind it. It's to bring people in and bring people around, so if people wanna come in and drop off, they can sit in a parking spot for however many minutes and, and, and get off the street. If you, just doing straight math on Balfour, if you calculate the length of the street, take out the driveways, it gives you possibly sixteen spots to park. Again, we're at twenty-seven, so any of the, the sixteen spots that we, that maybe have already been taken by the congregation, will come off the street. I mean, it's not, we're not saying that there's, you know, thirty people usually parking, and you've heard it tonight in testimony. There's thirty people trying to park at, at this synagogue. No, it's probably ten, maybe twelve, maybe six. And we're gonna have room for that now on-site, and they're gonna be able to maneuver on-site to get in and out on those, in that parking and get back out onto Balfour. And it will alleviate the blind curb. There's nothing we can do. You're not gonna realign that road at this point. But the way that we have it designed, you already have no parking, probably, I think, if, looking at it, it's probably pretty close to our westernmost drive. We've already proposed no parking sign up until our other drive too. So you're actually gonna improve that. You're gonna have more distance of no parking along that curve. So again, we, there's thought put into this, and, and we hope we address the issues of that.
Can I, can I clarify? The, the, the plan, as part of the plan, is to have that whole curve as no parking all the way past the synagogue?
Correct, sir. Does not pass the, pass the second drive.
Pass the second drive.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
I just wanna say something, uh, without belaboring any of these issues. I've lived, I live, my house is on the curve. Uh, and, um, it's supposed to be ten miles an hour when you get to that curve. The only thing that's gonna stop that mayor is public safety rights tickets. Signs are not going to stop that. I've been living there for thirty-five years. Out of the fifty-something, fifty-six years I've been in Oak Park, I've known that location for thirty-five years. So I'm new on the block. But, uh, unless public safety rights tickets, you know, that's the only thing that will really change what goes on at that curve.
Yeah, I mean, we're here to talk about the request for variances. It seems like the only one that's contentious really is the number of parking spots. And I agree with, but I don't live right there. What you're all saying, I, I think you've done a good job of, of planning to get the cars off the street. But we really need the congregants to respect the changes and take their cars off the street. I think that's the key.
Can I make a motion to?
No, there's a motion on the floor. No?
No, 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 I was making sure there's no questions. So we can go ahead.
I would like to make a motion based on the information presented in the staff report and additional findings and facts discussed during the review of case twenty-five dash zero one. I move to approve the request of Torres Thiam one six three one, one si- one four six three one to one four six five one Balfour Avenue.
Second.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you all for coming.
And we're gonna move one.
Did we only do, I think we only did one.
Yeah, we only did the first.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have to go through each one.
That was for the waiver for the first one.
No, that was, that was for number one.
That was for number one?
I didn't read it. That's always the waiver number one.
That was waiver number one, so number two, three and four.
I, I will move to, to accept waiver two, three and four as well. A waiver of the space requirements, a waiver of the, uh, the setbacks and a waiver of the parking area to the front, to summarize.
Okay. And then we can go ahead and have a vote for, for the second. Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Yes.
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 No. Alright, thank you. So that is all set for case number two five oh one to be approved. We're gonna move on on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to go through all of them. Okay.
We, we made a motion of them all together.
Yeah, they, we just said one, two, three and four. Okay. Alright, so our next new business is going to be, I'll give them a second. Sure. Well, can you say that one more time for us? Oh, if parking becomes an issue.
Can we incorporate it into the vote?
Yeah, my, my answer stays the same.
I, I think we're, do we have to have a separate motion for it? I just wanna make sure we're following Robert's rules on it and everything.
I would say to amend the vote to.
I would move to amend the vote to improve the conditions of parking, uh, specifically, parking conditions. Through the growth of congregation, the applicant shall work with the economic development and planning department to provide alternative parking in compliance with the zoning ordinance. and planning department to provide alternative parking in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Second.
We all set for that? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we actually have one more thing, I'm sorry. So we're all set with that, so you guys are free to go, we have more to do on here. Alright, so, the next order of new business is going to be election of officers for a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Houston.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, if you guys can take this off?
Move outside.
Yes, please.
Move outside, please.
The meeting is still in session.
Yes, I'm sorry, the meeting is still in session? So we're gonna need... Oh, I gotta do all this?
Yeah, you gotta whip that thing, gotta mean business.
Oh, we're just gonna... I think they're all moved out at this point.
Okay, now we do that.
Alright, again, we're gonna go to a sea of new business, which is going to be election of officers for a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary.
I nominate Mr. Houston for chairman.
Second. Can we just do the nominations and then vote for it all in one shot, or do we gotta vote for each position separately?
Separate?
Separate?
Alright, so we had a...
I haven't eaten dinner.
So we had the motion for chairperson Houston, and we had a second, can we get a vote for it, please?
Uh, yes.
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 Chair Houston. We're waiting for your vote, on your, on your...
Would you like to be chair?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes.
Alright, so, now we need a motion for vice-chairperson.
I, I move for member Brian.
Alright, can we get a vote for vice-chairperson? Vice chair, yes.
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 Alright. Okay, and now we need an election of secretary? Who is, yeah, who is the secretary now?
You can...
I move to re, re-nominate Clyde for the secretary.
I second that.
No, yes, yes.
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 Alright, motion for adjournment.
I second.
We are so adjourned.
You did a great job.
So adjourned.
That was a tough...